Ready? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I would ask before we rise for a moment of silence, we keep all of those families and individuals that are in the destruction and devastation and pathway of Hurricane Milton in our prayers as as we observe a moment of silence, follow my pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
For all of you, those who are here for the first time, we are all recording live and live streaming, so anything you say is obviously a part of a memorialized video. We were doing that in an effort to try to create more transparency and the ability for us to communicate and engage our public. This week is a workshop meeting, which usually is about discussing a number of issues that we will ultimately then be acting on the legislative meetings, but oftentimes, as of today, we also have items that we will be taking action on. For next week, the approval of minutes will be taken up for the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop meeting minutes, the October second, two thousand and twenty-four legislative meeting minutes, and the October second, two thousand and twenty-four Salary Board meeting. Is there any questions or concerns related to those meeting minutes? Hearing none, executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Pease.
Good morning, commissioners. On October eighth, the commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel on the renewal of the Agreement for Medical and Prescription Administrative Services, expenditure bond proceeds, considering the purchase of real property, building maintenance, settlement agreements, natural gas pricing and bidding, disability life and A D and D insurance, and sponsorships. The Solicitor's Office was present, as well as Christopher Davis, Director of Budget and Finance.
Any questions for Mr. Pease? Public participation, this is on the first opportunity for the public to participate on agenda items only this morning. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to participate and make comment on any of the agenda items before the Board of Commissioners requiring our action? Seeing none, directors and guests, I'd like to invite Chad Libby, our Director of Probation Services, and we have the Honorable Judge Royce Morris with us today, as well as very capable staff from juvenile probation and probation services that have really allowed us to be in the forefront and leader in those areas, to be able to recognize juvenile justice week and their proclamation. But at this point, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Prees, who's the oversight of the juvenile probation department or the liaison related to the courts for for comment.
Thank you, Chairman Hartwick. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I want to start off by thanking Chad, you and your team, Nicole, Chris, the Honorable Judge Royce Morris, for the great work you have done, are doing, and will continue to do on behalf of the juveniles. Private providers, juvenile probation, judges, and stakeholders provide balanced and restorative justice within our communities, and you are working with tomorrow's leaders, individuals who may have gotten a little bit of trouble, but you are working with them day to day throughout the process to right the ship, and they can become valuable members of community of our communities. And we can't thank you enough for the work that you do, working with law enforcement out there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Your job never ends, and you don't give up on these kids. They're the future of the nation. Many of them made some bad decisions, but we're hoping that with your leadership and your guidance, continued guidance, that these individuals will be productive members of society. I do have a proclamation, but before I get to that, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any additional comments, and we'd like to hear from you and your team on on some of the great projects you're working.
What order would the commissioners comment to the chair?
Well, thank you for all the work that you do. Certainly, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for diversion, I guess, when a juvenile makes a mistake. It's an opportunity to provide resources, education, opportunity, as opposed to the potential that they're going to be a lifelong offender. And I just thank you for your work in that, and and I hope to continue to see it grow and and continue to see it being resourced in a way that provides more diversion for young people who have their whole life ahead of them and and certainly need opportunities. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was, we have a long pathway and certainly a a long history related to the reformation of the juvenile justice system generally. I know when I started here as a commissioner a long time ago, we had a significant number, I think it was well over four hundred kids that were in our care. Today, you know, through trials, reform, the ability to ensure that we are not casting a wider net, the ability to understand risk, motivational interviewing, the ability to attach the appropriate level of services with the appropriate level of kids. Instead of creating a farm team for the adult system, we are really attempting to figure out a way to ensure that there is restoration and a pathway forward without getting individual children institutionalized based upon the color of their skin or their their economic background and situation. And that was a tough road to take twenty-some years ago, to be able to address these concerns in a way that wasn't thinking that way. I remember the idea of judges, you know, thinking this is some far out of the space idea, but I know that we had a department, and and when we finally had engaged the judges in the right way, and I think it was through the Annie Casey Foundation, their Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, really setting the framework for looking at this in a way that was based upon facts and assessments, which they, quite frankly, were trying to do within the bail system, rather than how we feel about kids. Because what we're finding out, programs like Scared Straight made adults feel great, but when kids were being exposed to higher level of risks, their behavior got worse. And and ultimately, the their their levels of criminality and criminal justice behavior, criminal genetic behaviors became more at risk. And I want to thank Director Libby and staff, but even even more now, as we've moved into a direction under the leadership of Judge Morris, really looking for innovative ways for us to be at the table and the head of the curve rather than reacting to what's happening. In in saying that, I want I want to thank the partners, community partners, but we still have several challenges I see in front of us. Number one, we need community-based partners, not to disqualify, but with ways to be able to engage families that are going to be there long after the box is checked, and the ability for us to be able to actually have a level of service that's going to be connected by families and the degrees of separation that exists within this community. The second thing we really should be having, and and we look towards is, we've got a challenge with gang issues right now, and there every community deserves to be protected. And there are a lack of adequate placement. Sometimes I feel that the transition to move our kids that should not have been in the system out, there was never a preparation and a reinvestment from the state to be able to create specialized services for children who are very difficult to serve, that have extreme mental health issues, that may have physical health and behavioral health issues. The lack of placements, detention facilities, and the like are a real significant issue that you face every day in a problem. I know we are currently talking to Burks and Lehigh County to be able to expand those sites, but ultimately, we 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 have got to figure out a way to balance that, both where we're at, but also with community safety. So I I know the challenges are great, but the employees that work for Dolphin County are ones that are true heroes. I know they balance this in a way that they put the citizens first, and we are grateful for juvenile probation and their efforts and how they have led the way, rather than responded to what's going on, and also through the leadership of Judge Morris, how they continue to figure out ways to support kids and families and not just institutionalize it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I can, first, I would like to have all the juvenile probation staff stand, please. I I just want to thank, as a director, I'm very humbled and honored to be your leader because it's an easy job for me. It's such great work that all of you, and I can't thank you enough for the commitment that you have given to youth and families and for providing a department that is highly reputable throughout the state, really throughout the country. What we've been able to do here in Dolphin County is just remarkable, especially the many challenges that we faced through COVID, post-COVID, a lot of legislative changes, visionary programs, also meeting our high-risk youth with the gang issues that we've all know exist within our communities. But most important, the resiliency that all of you have provided throughout the especially the last three or four years is remarkable, and it's just a true honor to be your leader. And I want to thank you all for your continued hard work and your commitment. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your ongoing support. As Commissioner Hartwick stated, Mr. Prees, you both, specifically both of you have been, you know, on the Board of Commissioners for over twenty years. You've seen us grow. You've been supportive in in the budgetary aspect of things, as well as the support of of really allowing us to raise a, you know, a youth, because it does take a village to do so. And you guys being a part of that village are are two deputies, Nicole and Chris, I can't thank you enough for your commitment and leadership, running two departments, not not easy. And I know that the ship sails smoothly with these two at the helm, and I want to thank them both. The Honorable Judge Morris, a very unique judge, has really been able to provide just a a different perspective. just a a different perspective on the bench with the youth and family, the time and commitment that he provides each family and youth. And in terms of professionally helping them grow personally, excuse me, and really helping support the many initiatives we have. Diversion being a huge initiative in Dolphin County. Ten years ago, we probably had less than twenty percent of our cases that were placed on informal or consent decree. Now we're almost at forty percent of all the cases either in diversion, informal or consent decree. Yeah, it's even higher. So what's really great about our diversionary program is we have, you know, ninety-two, ninety-two, ninety-three percent successfully complete the program without being rearrested, again, not having them penetrate further into the system. So a lot of that work is is, you know, accomplished through the the leadership of our staff and their commitment. And I want to thank all of them, thank Judge Powell as well for her leadership and her being a new juvenile court judge this year, as well as our our President Judge, Judge Scott Evans, and for his continued support in in doing what we're able to do. And that's really an innovative programs to really help our team succeed. That said, Nicole and Chris, I want to make a comment during the live judgment.
Thank you. I just want to say we're honored and humbled to be here this morning for all of you recognizing juvenile justice week. We have, over the last fifteen years, really embarked on, you know, the juvenile justice system enhancement strategies, employing evidence-based practices, using research and data to inform our decisions. We're a leader at the table because of our staff, because of the probation officers that are behind you and the ones that are not here today. We are also here today because of our support staff. I call them the super glue. They are what keeps us together. They are what keeps us afloat. I did just want to take a moment to kind of acknowledge all of the roles that probation officers play because I think that there's a a public perception, but behind the scenes, we're teachers, we're mentors, we're coaches. At times, we are ad hoc parents. We're social workers. We're therapists. We sometimes carry the burden of trauma and consequences that are that our youth face. Most importantly, what you will find is our staff are the champions of the youth in our community. Behind the scenes, we have staff that this week were coordinating homecoming outfits to make sure that every kid has a normal adolescent experience, making sure that they had dresses and shoes and flowers and corsages. We have probation officers that spend their own money making sure that kids have seats for the football field or soccer field. We just bought basketball shoes to make sure that a youth can try out for basketball. Those are the things that that oftentimes people do not get to see. In addition, we work with our partners to make sure kids have food on the table, have housing, stuff that's not necessarily in the world of juvenile probation, the things that our staff ensure that every kid has. Because just because you made a mistake does not mean that that needs to define you in our world. Lastly, I do just want to thank the Honorable Judge Royce Morris as well as the Honorable Courtney Powell. They serve from the bench with compassion, integrity and respect from all. And when it starts at the top, that's the expectation and we do nothing less. So again, thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you. I'd like to to first thank Judge Morris for taking time out of his busy day to be present for this very special event. I'd like to thank Judge Powell for all the work that she has done in her short term on the bench. I would like to thank the Commissioners to take the opportunity to present this proclamation, recognize the great work that all of our staff do, all of our juvenile probation team does, day in and day out. Most importantly, though, I would like to thank our staff for the commitment and dedication that they have, day in and day out, doing the job. And their commitment to changing lives, youth and families of Dolphin County. I think Chad alluded to the pandemic and I can say that through their hard work, we were able to take a job that is about people. It's about face-to-face interaction. And we were able to continue that mission and continue to perform those duties virtually and change it within a matter of a week or so. And that that's a tribute to them. Each and every day, they go out, they put themselves, it's sometimes in very difficult challenging situations. And yet they show up to work each and every day and they're committed to the job. So I thank them very much. Without them, we could not do this job. And again, thank Commissioners for this tremendous honor.
Guys, how many kids are in placement today?
There's what, thirty?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
So over four hundred to thirty-three. Again, you know, there are folks who, you know, look at things related to criticism and we would call them citizens against virtually everything. There are a lot of those that I come into counter with, but the idea of seeing real progress and the ability for us to treat our kids and families in a way that talks about developing a future is evidenced by the amount of kids that are actually being served in in ways that are no longer institutional. And for that, all of you deserve a great deal of credit. We appreciate you.
Judge? Well, this is easy. I just need to say thank you. I I'm on the phone with these folks almost all the time throughout the week and Nicole knows the numbers like nobody else. She was the one giving you those numbers. But there's a great team here and I'm proud to serve the juvenile judge team. And it's very important to me that, you know, we have care and compassion for the kids and they demonstrate that each and every day. Not by just the things that I hear in court, but you know, Chad was calling me the other day saying, are they saying enough nice things about the kids in court? I said, yeah, they're they're bringing out the positive as well. There's a lot of negative that comes from the crowd. It's the compassion of the kids that makes me so impressed in every day. And, you know, we hear all these statistics about how bad our kids are and what's going on in the community with our kids. So many kids that are coming through the system, not coming back. That's because of probation department, folks that are working with them. And I'm on the Juvenile Court Judges Commission, so I get to hear about all the other juvenile probation offices around the state. And when we get our court observation and we meet with our team, we are a model for the rest of the state. And we demonstrate through things that we do each and every day in the court system, what should be done for kids and others. So I'm I'm so proud of these folks and I'm so glad that they're getting this proclamation of juvenile justice week because it's well deserved. I can, as a parent who raised kids in Dolphin County, who now has grandkids who hopefully raise in Dolphin County someday, I'm proud to say that I know if they wind up getting caught in the system, they're going to have people who care and looking out for them and trying to put them in a position where they can go through the system, come out of the system and never come back again. So I'm proud of that. Thank you all. Thank you for the pro.
So Chad, I have to say this. It's been a privilege to serve as your oversight since January of this year, so about ten months now. The professionalism and the engagement of of you and your team is is top-notch. And I just want to say that publicly, the great work, as I said before, that you do twenty-four seven, three sixty-five because it is an everyday job that you're engaged in. I do have to clear for the record that I have not been serving as a Commissioner for twenty years. My hairline may tell you. That that goes to Christopher Hartwick, who's the longest-serving Commissioner in, I believe, Dolphin County history. I now fourteen years as of October first, so fourteen years, twenty, a little bit of a difference there, but but thank you.
Seems like eternity, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
You were here before me, then, right?
I was in security. Correct, correct. All right. Are we ready? Mary, can I get a drum roll, please? All right, here we go. The proclamation, I'd like to read this into the record on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. "We, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, proudly honor and celebrate the juvenile probation officers who play a crucial role in supporting at-risk youth by dedicating their time and expertise to guide them through challenging circumstances. Whereas Dolphin County's juvenile division is charged with ensuring balanced and restorative justice through implementation of evidence-based practices through the juvenile justice system enhancement strategies. Whereas juvenile probation officers in Dolphin County provide balanced attention to the protection of our community, promote victim restoration, imposition of accountability for offenses committed by juveniles and the development of competencies to enable juveniles to become responsible and productive members of their community. Whereas these dedicated juvenile probation officers work tirelessly to implement the best practices and provide treatment and services in a fair and unbiased manner with the goal of youth redemption. Whereas their commitment goes beyond mere supervision, they invest in building relationships that empower youth to make better choices and envision brighter futures, often becoming a steady source of encouragement during pivotal moments in their lives. Therefore, we join the two hundred and eighty-six thousand residents of Dolphin County in lifting and supporting these juvenile probation officers and honoring all the time and effort they continue to give for the youth they work with. And we do hereby proudly proclaim October sixth through October thirteenth as Juvenile Justice Week two thousand and twenty-four in Dolphin County." Jess, you get this picture? Yes, up here? We'll do like two, two rows and I just stand in the back maybe.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, our next item on the agenda this week is the Human Resources Department, Tanisha Whedon, who's here to present. Good morning, Tanisha. How are you?
I'd like to request a vote on item number nineteen of the personnel packet.
Is there any question for Tanisha? I will entertain a motion to move item nineteen of today's personnel packet.
I'll make the motion to approve item number nineteen.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis?
Commissioners?
Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday. Be ready for your approval and vote next week.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Any questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you. Chief Clerk, Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Pies?
I have nothing important. There are questions of me.
Questions for the Chief Clerk? Questions? Solicitors' report, Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Commissioner. There are five matters for Board action today. They, those matters have been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Is there any questions for Mr. Owens on any of the items or any other concerns? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for items one through five on today's agenda. Yeah, I I think we were going to finalize that next week, but let me ask the question. There there were two options to be able to select.
Yes, for item number three, there are technically two options that we were provided. The finalized paperwork will state either those options. It would be fine if the Board wants to choose one right now, but in my mind, this is just to go with the renewal for capital. And then for next week's, it will be, I think I've, what I've gathered from all three of you, which option we're heading towards. So if you want to make that and add that to the motion, we can, but it will be sorted out next week.
So with the understanding that that'll be clearly defined with the per employee per benefit amount would be, we were covering how many individuals who are covered, what the additional fee and the pricing is, all for both discussion and public disclosure. Today is just motioning that we are moving with the the attempt to do a one-year agreement with the details to follow. Any questions related to that?
I guess my question, my only question is, this is an independent agreement with the entity for a fourth year. We're not going through.
Correct. I requested this directly from our current vendor, which is Capital Blue Cross.
Understood. I do have a point of order question. We skipped training packet. Does the training packet need to be?
There is.
Should we just move on the training packets since it was above the?
Yeah, my my apologies. The it it does require a vote, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the training packet.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you for a good catch. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, back to matters, require Board action.
Make a motion that we approve items one through five on today's agenda.
Second, there's been a motion made by Commissioner Pries. And a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Former business will be directed to the, oh, I'm sorry, former business, if you want to discuss it, Solicitor Owens?
It's going to be tabled for one additional week. We're still working out details of the contract.
You can do that without an official motion.
Correct.
So the former business, item number one, will be tabled officially. Our Commissioners' comments and actions, Commissioner Douglas.
I've coordinated with V H H Council to review more documents on Tuesday, October fifteenth, related to concerns I've previously raised. I'm looking forward to reviewing all the documents that I've requested. I do have something of an update. I know last week I I mentioned frustration with not being a part of processes. I I just want to say, moving forward, if I feel like I've been cut out of a process or I feel like I haven't had a voice in a process that I should have had a voice in as a sitting Commissioner, I'm going to continue to bring that to public meetings, not because I'm trying to shame anybody, but because I've been here more than nine months now. I've been assured I'm going to be a part of processes and continually I'm finding out about processes after they happen that require the Board. Last week, after I expressed that frustration, I found out about a process for our disability and life insurance. And I guess I have some clarifying questions. I'm not even sure who to ask them to. But the the question I have is, does the Chairman have unilateral authority to replace, appoint or designate a broker of record without a vote of the Board of Commissioners? Or does any Commissioner, maybe even better, have the ability to do that? Is that? What is required?
So I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer that in a public meeting and provide legal advice. So but I'm happy to talk to you about that after the meeting.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and assume that if we look back at the two thousand and nine, if I look back at the two thousand and nine minutes, I see that the broker of record, which is no longer the broker of record, was voted on in that meeting long before I was here. So nearly fifteen years, over fifteen years ago, that broker was fired without notification from the Board of Commissioners. It wasn't notification from the Board of Commissioners because I didn't notify anybody. I wasn't privy to anything. We had a broker of letter, a broker of record letter go out that I never saw, replacing a broker without an RFP process for the broker that would replace. And that broker might be temporary right now, but we're up against a timeline where in the next week we have to make some decisions regarding this insurance. And this process has been going since July. Again, I'm actually probably in favor of all of this because it's going to save the county thirty thousand dollars, I think, a year or whatever the the email said. It seems like a great deal. I just don't like that I find out that a broker's been released, a new broker has been given. The the broker record letter says they are a new broker without being included in that decision.
If I, if I could obviously respond, I think my my understanding related to both past history and practice has been we have allowed for individuals to stay in positions that have continually not looked out for the best interest of taxpayers.
I agree.
I'm I'm just telling you, like, I'm joining Commissioner Douglas in a I'm, I'm just telling you, like, I'm joining Commissioner Douglas in a call for RFPing everything. I'm, I'm just telling you, from my perspective, it opens things up for competition. It opens things up for local business, it opens things up for more efficient and effective costs for taxpayers, and by the way, we are in a budget deficit situation where we have a significant challenge with meeting those concerns. I had, I understood based upon insurance practices and my, my sort of understanding of how a process would go to be able to ascertain, you know, quotes, not changing business practices or vendors, but for the ability to understand how you can get a gauge on pricing. Clearly, with a no commitment, a no finance level of exchange or a, a no stop in the ability to currently pay the current vendor. So, again, you asked that question yesterday, I want to make sure that I followed up and, and there should be no stop of payment to the current vendor. But how else do you think that we're supposed, and, and again, I understand process concerns with notification, and I think we had a lot of those discussions yesterday, which I hope are going to be remedied, I, I think if we're going to be on the same page on some of these things and you defining those kind of notification concerns with other commissioners, we, we had talked about developing better processes to ensure that those things are happening, and I'm committed to doing that. And, and I will tell you this, the idea of gaining better pricing is something that we should not wait on, and I, I'm hopeful to have a longer and more robust discussion with this Board of Commissioners about doing it for every area of county government in a way that is going to allow for competition and open and fair price and also keeping those who are doing business accountable for providing a high level of service. So, as we, I'm, I'm examining budget issues, I took a look at life and disability, as we're looking at these things, we had two consecutive multi-year increases that were dramatic. And as I started to ask these questions, it became pretty clear to me that as it stands currently in Dolphin County, we have a broker that negotiates all insurance, again, some of these things I was not the oversight of, and I, I have a mind to say, let's save money, let's do things more efficiently, let's open up the process. When I heard that we, that we have one broker that negotiates money, I don't know if I'm venturing into territory I shouldn't be, but I'll be fully transparent in, in, in being able to do, and if I venture into an area that I shouldn't be, please let me know. But i- in, in doing that, they negotiate all the county's insurance and from what I'm told, there are areas that they negotiate for that they let slide in order to try to benefit certain other areas that they negotiate for, and I, I believe we should have an active look at all of our areas. And if you're letting one area go that's having higher premiums and it's costing our, our employees more, we should be saying, no, you shouldn't be doing that, so I, I understood the process to be one of being able to give the ability for them, for an individual to negotiate with a, our current life and disability provider who is Sun Life. What, first of all, asking the question, why are your rates going up, like, like, why are your rates going up and is this a competitive market price? There was supposed to be a, an engagement that would be clear in defining both a non, I, I, I'll actually read an email that was sent related to this, it talked about a thirty-day no commitment, no cost broker record that would have a definite term with a start and an end date that's supposed to involve no financial commitment or no level of commitment from the county to be able to go with any offer, but to be able to ascertain, are we getting screwed? In the deal related to our, our life and disability, I have no way to reference that in an open market.
But that's not what went out.
But, but that's what I requested that goes out.
Well, I understand what was requested, but what went out was very different, so I, I guess I'm, I'm not trying to say, I guess even when you're making that request, we sit in an executive session nearly weekly, wouldn't that be something you would share with your colleagues that you found a way to save us thirty thousand dollars on something and that we could be included in that, because I agree with you, RFP everything, I've said that since January second. Sorry if you're a vendor here and you don't want to be RFP'd, I believe in competition, like, I believe competition drives the best rate, and I believe everyone should have a seat at the table to compete for it, and I don't want anyone to have preferential treatment because I want to prefer the best vendor who does quality work and the best vendor who gives us the best price to save taxpayer dollars, I one hundred percent agree with that. I've been saying RFP everything since January second. But I'm not going to RFP things in a silo as one commissioner, I'm going to do it as a team, I'm going to ensure that we're all aware that a particular vendor is being put potentially on the hot seat, they might view it that way if they've been here for fifteen years, but I want to make it clear, we might be RFPing our insurance services for this, but we never RFP'd the, the broker. The broker just came right in and did this, we, we didn't choose, unless Commissioner Priest has, has a different understanding of what took place, and there was two votes that were had in a meeting, there was a, a broker chosen to go out and get this information where we could have had an RFP for a broker that we felt would give us the best deal and make that decision together, which by the way, in two thousand nine, that's what was voted on as action of this board, was that this would be our broker of record for this, and now that broker has effectively been released by a letter that went out, and it may not have been the letter that you requested, and so in, in this case, I feel bad that that's the position you were put in, but, but what I'm saying is you would have never been put in that position if we would have all been privy to the information.
And I think we had a discussion yesterday about that process and, and the ability to communicate openly and, and to ensure that as a matter of policy and communication that those things have to occur. Commissioners need to be notified, I have no other way of understanding or advocating or understanding pricing, but I, I don't also think we should be waiting to try to save money. So, from my perspective, I have no way to be able to look at the market and say, the Sun Life's doing a good job or a bad job besides gaining a cost quote from a potential another person that could say, this is what they would charge you if in fact it was an open market situation. I, I thought that's all was happening, the ability for us to be able to determine pricing in an open market and are we getting fair pricing for this particular piece with no commitment to go with that plan, to go with that vendor, or to provide any financial exchange of resources.
But I have an email that told me we needed to make a decision by the start of this week. It is past the start of this week, and so decisions were made behind the scenes without me being informed. I found out on Thursday, in that email I found out on Thursday, it said, we will need to make a decision by the start of next week, it's not on our agenda today, but it'll probably be on our agenda next week, and I'll be expected to make a decision that's going to potentially save the tax, the taxpayers, our, our employees thirty thousand dollars and, and be a good fiscal decision of which I was not a part of. And, and, and we dropped a, a broker without ever notifying the broker, but also without notifying the commissioners, and it seems as if the only way that practice could be done would be by an act of this board. Not a unilateral act of one individual, and that's where I'm just, and again, if you accident, I sign a lot of things. Look, as a commissioner, we sign a lot of things, as soon as we just acted on these five things, Jess is going to hand me a folder, it's going to be filled with things, I don't read everything I sign, but I will say this, I voted on it, if I request something to sign, I certainly read it, that's, that's, I'm not reading every single contract we sign, but I'm, I'm certainly trusting our solicitors, I'm trusting things, if that was an oversight, I understand that oversight, but the communication is not an oversight, it's a pattern of behavior that's existed here, and I understand yesterday, we talked about creating new communication patterns, but ultimately, I've been here more than nine months and we've talked about creating new communication patterns, I've had these conversations nearly weekly behind the scenes, because there are multiple things I've been left out of that ultimately the voters in Dolphin County put me in the seat to make decisions about Dolphin County. They can't be made if I'm not informed, and that's just getting to a point to where I don't know how to respond other than bring it up here to say, I can't be cut out of these things, and Commissioner Priest shouldn't be cut out either, I, I just don't, and, and, and to be clear, the, the letter that went out uses the word design, I don't want to use any vendors' names, any brokers' names, I don't want to get into that. But it went out on your letterhead, you signed it, wasn't on the letterhead of the county. It's our understanding that the County of Dolphin retains the right to name the broker of record of our choice as it applies to our, you said Sun Life already, Sun Life Insurance Program. Effective immediately, we designate, I'm not going to say who the name is, as our broker of record for our Sun Life plans and services listed above and associated with our group policy number provided. Please allow this letter to replace all prior broker of record appointments. Then it continues, this leather, this letter further constitutes your company's authority to furnish, then it says the name, with all information pertaining to our current insurance contracts, premium rates, policy information, renewal actions, and all other account information in connection with the insurance program and service with this letter applies. The current consultant should continue to collect any commissions payable for the business lines currently in place with Sun Life for the next thirty days, this was sent on August twenty seventh, so the assumption would be those commissions collected are no longer able to be collected. Then it says the name of the new broker, and it says, will become the consultant of record effective immediately. I, I just, I look at that and I'm like, that is a clear directive of who our new broker of record is, what you described in that letter, what you asked for, I'll say this, is not what this is, and that's frustrating to me if that's the position you were put in, but I'm put in a different position of never seeing this, never knowing this, and being aware that that's someone's throat.
So, perhaps I, I can clarify, so, the mechanics of the broker of record issue, I believe that has to happen to shop rates. And, and, and I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe it's a temporary position so that pricing can be obtained and, and that, that broker of record can be replaced or returned. I'm not, I don't believe it's a votable issue to shop rates, now, you were kind enough to share that letter with me. And I, I'm good, but I don't have a photogenic memory, but that letter is, is somewhat ambiguous, and, and I, I believe that this can be corrected once it becomes a votable issue, so, and I, I approved, I'm aware of one letter that I approved from the Solicitor's Office for purposes of shopping rates. And, and again, I'm, I'm speaking not with respect to anything you're talking about with, in terms of get, being shared and include, included in the process. Of course, that, that, that should occur. But I think this was just a, a temporary process and the way the mechanics work, and particularly with this carrier, I think you have to, to put a new broker of record in for at least thirty days to get information exchanged between the right parties to get quotes to address what Commissioner Artwick so artfully said, are we getting screwed?
Would, would, so, 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 again, I'll go back to this. The broker of record letter to do that may very well have been what we would do if we wanted to see if we could get a better deal. I would assume that, just so you know, how our other broker received that our fifteen-year relationship with our other broker, they were notified that they were pretty much fired, they were not notified for thirty days, they will have their job back. So, I guess, no one, no one contacted them and let them know that this was going out, no one reached out to them, is it standard practice to not contact a, a broker that's been working with the county for fifteen years to let them know we're considering a different broker? And then is it also standard practice for, for me not to even be aware that we've chosen another broker to, to give us that information as opposed to open an RFP process? So, it's just, this is, it's just messy everywhere, and it would be so easy to send an FYI email, I get, I get FYI emails from people all the time here that are just trying to keep me informed of a process. I understand processes are fluid, and I understand there's an urgency with some of these matters, but the urgency, if the urgency requires a commissioner on this dais not being informed, then we will not, in, in my opinion, we should not give in to the tyranny of the urgent, we should ensure that information is shared because we, as commissioners, have an obligation to be informed.
I appreciate, agree, and understand with everything you just said. I just wanted to shed some light on it as best I could, thank you.
And, and for, for my position, again, I think we talked a little bit yesterday about process and not moving, and you know, the only thing I don't want our system to become is not able to be able to respond and to take advantage and to assess and to do these things, because we have, we're facing tons of right-to-know requests, other issues, things that, I got a list of five pages that, front and back, of the functions that are required of the day to the operations of county government and things that we are working on that, that I think from a regulatory compliance to a legal compliance, to the functions of the daily operations, to everything that's listed in the county code for our responsibilities are, it's, it's a difficult thing to manage, and as we're looking at budget crisis and a fall, look at this, we've got to be moving forward to the extent of can any potential ideas of cost savings, they're welcome, and, and quite frankly, open, and, and even as we ascertain prices, there will be nothing that's done here without notification.
I'll make the following statement just to close. The people of Dolphin County elected us to represent their best interests, placing their trust in our judgment, our integrity. We have a responsibility to honor that trust and live up to the values that got us here. To do this, we must work together, fully informed, to make decisions that truly benefit our community. When critical information is withheld from me, I am prevented from fulfilling my duty to serve our constituents effectively. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a failure to meet the standard that people expect and deserve, and it diminishes trust. We owe it to them to do the right thing, and that means transparency, teamwork, and integrity in everything, thank you.
Don't disagree with those statements. Commissioner Pries?
Thank you. I have to concur that we have to do a better job communicating on this floor and within this administration. Been asking for that since the beginning of the year. I have been receiving promises over and over again throughout the year that will occur. I'm hoping that that will eventually occur. Dating back to one of our first meetings when we voted three to zero on moving a department over to Tech Port, it, it was in the agenda, but the details weren't really there. And it was brought up that we wanted more details, and we've got more details in our agendas, there's no doubt about it, probably the most detail I've ever seen in my fourteen years, without a doubt. However, I do have some questions that have been brought up that I need some clarification. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Douglas for bringing up at that September twenty-third meeting that those numbers, which were eventually weren't accepted, were within the last best final proposal, if he hadn't done that, I would have voted on that proposal that was in front of us, but we have since found out that those numbers were not scrupulous, and we moved on to where we are today. I guess my question is, and this is about the process. Now, back in September second, two thousand nine, we had a three to zero vote, it was motioned by Commissioner Hartwick, and it was a three to zero vote by former board to approve the insurance group coverage effective November first, two thousand nine, which pretty much went fifteen years to the day. The letter that went out August twenty seventh that was provided to me yesterday, and it says, effective immediately, we designate blank insurance solutions as our broker of record, so we did, so I just, we need to make sure moving forward that all three of us are up to speed on items being voted on and that, and that unilateral letters going out from individuals' personal letterhead, if it gets sent out, copy us or communicate with us that this is occurring. Because when I get a phone call from a, a vendor that's been here fifteen years asking why we fired them, my response is, I don't know what you're talking about. And maybe they weren't fired, they think they were, so maybe that's a communication issue as well. In terms of finding better prices, who in the world wouldn't want to find better prices on a competitive basis for the count? But I would argue that the markets change year to year. So, who's to say that the broker that was here that now isn't couldn't have gotten those same competitive prices this year? I don't know. I just want to say for the record that we need to improve our communication on this board. I've asked it over and over again, and I'm going to continue to ask it moving forward. There's three commissioners, all three of us were elected. One-third, 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 elections have consequences, one party's now in charge over the other party, that shouldn't matter. We should still realize that there's three of us here and we have equal votes on the board, and a two-vote majority wins out on items that come before us. That being said, based upon the information that's presented today, or, I have, this is a solicitor question. Are we authorized as a board to rescind this letter? Could we do that, or has this, has this letter gone out as a declaration from this Board of Commissioners, just asking approval?
So, I, I have, I don't have the letter in front of me. I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to research that and give you an answer. It, it, my understanding of the whole process is that it is temporary. So, you may, but I would have to, I would have to, the office would have to research that and let you know.
My response to that is, we, we have our, our benefits, decisions coming up for our employees. Would there even be time if we rescinded this letter to go back and have the broker of record still be the broker? to go back and have the broker of record still be the broker of record? Not even know if that's even possible this time.
I'm unaware of the deadlines that apply to any of these benefits. If I knew that that date, I I probably could answer that question. I I think insurance brokers can turn things around fairly quickly, especially if they want the business. So I would hope. I would hope you can get three or four people to to price this for you, give you an idea of where the savings could be.
I wanted to just make that that statement.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
You're saying it's a temporary, nowhere in here does it list that it's temporary. It says designate, it says replace, and it says appoint. It does not, while that might have been what was required or what was desired to go out. Let me just make that clear. That might have been what was desired to go out is a temporary broker of record letter or or whatever that would be. Nowhere in here is it referencing that this arrangement is temporary. It's, please allow this letter to replace all prior broker of record appointments. Not temporarily replaced for thirty days. Like that's where I guess I don't see any legal standing for this being temporary. Now, I think the intentionality, as Commissioner Hartwick has shared, was for it to be temporary, to open up to this other vendor, to be able, this other broker to get us pricing. But that's not what functionally was done, which is my concern because this was done. I I I'm with Commissioner Priest in that the function of what was done, I believe we should be taking action to undo because it should be something that we do as a collective board. And I I, if you don't know at this time how to make that motion, I guess I would just request that we have some guidance in our next meeting or something on the agenda that can address this concern. Because I I I see it as a consistent concern and I also know we're already past the timeline that was provided in the emails of the need. And just to keep to keep clarity on that, we have an Oracle system that we've had challenges with. That is, it is countywide and we are now potentially going to have to have an onboarding process for a new vendor, for a new insurance, for a new broker. It's just once again, we're on the one yard line. I'm being asked to run a play that if I say I'm not going to run the play, it's going to have consequences because it's going to cost employees more work at the last second. It's going to cost us money to have to probably contract with Sierra Cedar to come in and do work with Oracle. And potentially in this case, we might lose this cost savings that exists here. But exists under in the shadows. Like I I I'm trying to make the best decision. I just need to I I'm not comfortable with that letter. If 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 it reflects my will, because it does not.
Understand, and I think I understand your comments. Just so the board knows, this this letter is not a contract. Obviously, so I think the question is, is this permanent and binding? I I don't have a contract in front of me, so this is simply a letter advising someone of of a change in the broker of record. So I think your original question was, can it can it be undone? And I think it can, and much like it was undone here, I think it can. But but again, I I would need to, really, I I don't have enough information.
The last thing I want to do is put our employees in a bad position because we're on it. If we're on a timeline, we don't want to have this held up. But another question I have is, why was this vendor chosen? Is there a relationship with someone there that we know or someone knows? I mean, what what made this vendor be the vendor chosen to do this work?
I'm uninvolved in that process.
I think somebody brought forward an idea about trying to bring pricing and and competitive price. Again, I my bigger question is, why has none of this been done for years? Like, why would we not be setting up a continual process to evaluate costs? The level of contracting that we've done, the ability for us to go, I I've been negotiating benefits for years. And I will tell you this, I have always been engaged in processes that are trying to attempt to save counties the county money in in ways that are going to do the work that we were intended to do. I don't think if we allow things to stay continually in a position as costs continue to rise, inflation continues to rise, county government continues to be more expensive to run, we've got a hundred and sixty six properties in Dolphin County that don't have a property management. I I can go through a myriad of things that I think could be done differently. We can all sit here and Monday morning quarterback. We need a plan to be able to 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 address and utilize all of those opportunities and have an action plan that we support to be able to provide competition, value, areas of openness, transparency. I would even go as far as taking a look at boards and commissions lobbying disclosure. Look, how many things have I talked to the solicitor about since the beginning of the year related to transparency and the ability to open up this county government? It's been my number, like I I don't stand out here in a public position to try to espouse things without trying to set them from a a a practical and a structural side with a plan to do. You can't just say things and believe that they are going to occur. We've got to be able to plan as a group to, if we're serious about addressing those concerns and figuring out a way to ensure that we've got the level of transparency, openness and competition in county government, we need a plan to do it. And then we need competent staff that are able to carry out the plans of the Board of Commissioners, which right now are being focused in areas that really may not necessarily be the functions of day to day operations. They are a function of a right to know officer and other things that need to be accomplished, but they are overwhelmed with responsibility. And quite frankly, should we we need to do a better job in my one commissioner's opinion of supporting our staff to be able to ensure that they have the manpower and the adequate level of support to administratively handle the multitude of functions that come along with county government. And again, I brought up a copy, a couple of copies of the county code. My my thought is, what are our fundamental requirements that we are provided? And we have to provide as county government and county commissioner. I suggest we should define what they are. Sometimes government challenges are, we try to solve all these problems and we don't do the things we're legally required to do in a way that is responsive to the citizens. If we try to do everything, we we can't possibly do that. We've got a county that is as rural, suburban and urban concerns. To balance that all and to take care of functions of county government is virtually impossible. So we've got to figure out what are the priorities of the board? And if it is openness, transparency, processes and figuring out ways to address them, we have to have a plan. We need to rip it apart. We need to have a whiteboard. We need to figure out a way to have the staff that is able and competently able to carry it out. And those are things that we've not only discussed, but we've talked about how do we set up the structure and plan to be able to do it? Here's what I'm, I I understand that I've been behind the scenes for a number of years trying to do the work. Things don't happen when you just say that they will. They have to happen by the appropriate administrative staff, the appropriate legal advice and the appropriate level of competent capable folks have have both institutional knowledge and knowledge of the laws and 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 by which we're governed. And if if we are not in a position to be able to do those basic functions, we're in real trouble. We 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 talked about, you know, yesterday, communication. And I believe communication can change. I mean, look, it's been a big change to report, Democrat, a hundred and nine years, first time Democrats are in charge. I don't see it as Democrats and Republicans. I see it as when we get in this job, ninety eight percent of the things we do are about the functions that we're required to do in county government. And we've got to have a damn good plan to be able to enact them and strategies to support our staff and being able to do it. And right now, we've got a significant deficiency in administrative capacity to be able to function and manage county government. So as we are doing that and we are strapping ourselves with that, we have more of a difficult time by saying we've got this priority, this priority, this part, and then multiple requests coming in. It's not possible to manage that level of workload with the administrative staff and responsibilities that we have. And we've got a real, really important agenda. And a lot of us, Commissioner Douglas, you brought a lot of great ideas to me. And the ideas that have come that way, I've tried to act on, you know, but we've got to tie together not only just ideas, but the functional administrative capacity to be able to see them through. We we talked about, you know, the an issue that's happened with the dysfunction of a clerk before talk. We we can never be that. You understand? We we cannot be that. And it's, I will say from my experience, government and running government is not easy. And it's not pretty. It's very complex and complicated. And there's always an opportunity to Monday morning quarterback and hopefully adjust about where we should. But one thing we should never do is break the law. We should always have the best intention of the people we serve. We need to be ethical, not claim we're not using things for political purposes and then do it. We've got to figure out a way to focus on what the people have sent us here to do and restore trust and faith in government. And to be honest, I am one hundred percent enjoying that. Anybody who knows my character and career knows that that's beyond reproach. But I will tell you that we need help to be able to perform those necessary functions from transitioning to jail to figuring out ways to expand detention services to, you know, a a a host of issues. I told you, I I I may start my next week's meeting with the five pages that we've written down about things that we need to do so the public has an idea of sort of the functions and challenges that we have and the amount of workload that's facing Dolphin County government. But but one thing that I won't want to do is, I'm not pointing fingers and blaming somebody else. I want to figure out a way that we can figure out a way to resolve these issues and do it better than anyone else. But to be able to do it, there's a certain amount of openness, discussion and conviction and staff support that we have to provide. We should never have our staff feel like they're in it. I'm going to say that straightforward. Our staff should feel they're committed public servants with extraordinarily difficult jobs that have, in many cases, they're understaffed. And they are sticking by and hustling in the best way they know how to better serve the constituents of Dolphin County. They need our support. They need us to alleviate barriers and show leadership, not have us fight. We 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 should figure out a way to coordinate together. And look, I've had shortcomings. I have shortcomings. I I don't want to, you know, I'm not saying that everybody's perfect, but the intent is right. The capacity is right and our ability to change and adjust to be, look, when adversity hits, it reveals our character. But I think we have an opportunity to head one way or another. And I'm I'm hopeful that we can head in a way that will really make the people who've entrusted us in this role extraordinarily proud of the people that they've actually voted for in the election. So I I also wanted to address sort of last week's discussion. If I had the personal privilege to be able to do that, I'll ask my colleagues here. Is that, is that an appropriate? So I I, last week I had, I was away. I actually took my mom on a trip that my 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 dad died three years ago. And as a part of his dying wish, he asked me to take my mom to places that he promised to and everything. So last week I was on a cruise to the New England area. We went to Newport, Rhode Island, the couple of spots in Maine and in New Brunswick. And as a part of it, the 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 commitment I have as a board of commissioner, I try not to miss meetings and things to do at at all. I tried to identify a location where we had some kind of silence as I got off the ship and I went to a restaurant which was empty at eight o'clock in the morning when I was scouting it out. But as the meeting was approaching time, it was getting packed with shipgoers and a whole lot of noise and activity and all kinds of music in the background. So I I was in a position where I couldn't hear anything. And and as my feedback and 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 projection was there, I'm not making excuses. It was just, just want to let you know it was a difficult thing to hear. And instead of, you know, trying to respond in a negative way, I kind of want to figure out what all happened and 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 how it all transpired. And I just want to make a couple of statements. I mean, there there was a a discussion about you know, the the credibility of a process for procurement for for an RFP. And I know we had an executive session yesterday and I I I know Commissioner Douglas made it clear his frustration was about the process. And it was about the consult. And he was not directing those issues and directing it related to credibility for me. And the old George Hartwood would have come back and maybe wanted to find, I I want to find out and ascertain what's going on and ensure that we we have a better understanding of what the challenges are moving forward related to the board. I want to say first of all, that this this contract has been negotiated for years. And and done so in a way that's brought competition to the table. Really, a significant amount of competition for market share and the ability to actually run the administrative services contract for Dolphin County. So this negotiation was not for eighty million dollars, which would be, as Commissioner Douglas, I think, talked about last week, the overall potential spend of Dolphin County. This contract was for about an annual amount of four hundred and eighty to four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for a provider to administer our our health insurance fund. We actually, when I started here, we were in a retro refund arrangement. We went to prospective retro refund means that the commissioners only paid for ninety percent of their healthcare. And at the time that the call was due, they were out the door and we had a six million dollar bill to pay. They only paid up to ninety percent of their healthcare in a retro refund arrangement. They made no changes to plan design. They made no changes to the way that we spend money. We went to a prospective arrangement and now we're fully self-funded. With within a fully self-funded plan, there, the amount that we pay for healthcare is the cost of the healthcare. So besides the administrative fee, which is less than two percent of the overall spend, the majority of the dollars, ninety eight percent of those dollars go directly to the utilization of healthcare for our providers. And what we actually negotiate is for the the administrative services oversight. And in this case, I think there was, I want to make clear, there was nothing illegal about this process. I mean, the the idea that there were things that happened, there was a bid that was non-solicited that came in late from a vendor. And there was two options, either to throw out that bid or we could have used that bid to negotiate with another provider and say, hey, match this deal or or even go lower. I mean, that was, that was a very distinct possibility and fully legal under the RFP standards. I think the board rightfully said, no, we're not going to, we're not going to entertain it when we were, we were all made aware of this at the same time. We're not going to entertain that additional bid. But today we stand here. I think the question still remains about, you know, some credibility issues that folks have with the provider. And I think we have process ways to improve communication. I think you heard that today and I think those are things that we need to continue to work on. But the idea that I'm getting calls about an appuning of your reputation or character, I'm going to just make it very clear that my intention is very clear and it has been and it's been demonstrated through my actions. I'm not, that there is nothing that I will do that's not in the best public interest. I will make that clear again. There is nothing that I will do that is not in the best public interest. I am not under any contract, I'm not under any any issues. And I have sacrificed my life in many ways to be able to do what's in the best interest of the public at the expense of my family in many cases. And I will be clear that that, that people may talk about reputation, they will never impugue my character because that is with me and solid no matter what I do. And those who know me know that that is my intent. But in this case, I think as we've discussed this a little further, I think there's always ways to make improvements. And as we make adjustments from a board's perspective, you have my commitment to do that, both publicly and privately. And and I I think the other part was, and I think I addressed this earlier. I've been around to a couple of, I've heard a lot from a lot of directors who were a little concerned about the tone and and my my thought is, and I've talked to both of my colleagues, we're clearly behind our directors in this county. I just want to say from a board and from one commissioner's perspective, we know the work that you do. And we want to make sure that we do everything we can to be able to support you and to ensure that your job's not made more difficult. Rather, we figure out a way to alleviate barriers and set it an agenda where you carry it out in a way that you have confidence, both in the people you serve and the people that are leading this county. So with that, I I just want to make sure that that's clear. And and again, we're we're going to be acting on a contract today that I think does represent savings, which is ultimately where we need to be active. I I'm, and I shouldn't say this publicly, I could care less what provider we have. I care, I care who we are actually going to ensure that is providing the best deal. And I want to make sure that the healthcare that's delivered to our employees is one that is going to continue to attract and retain those employees. So I I also know that I've had experience where vendors have been aware of the negotiations before we actually sign a deal. Keeping things close to the vest in this world is really important. So the idea of giving information and ensuring that there is nobody playing external games, trying to maintain the business is also important. So again, as we work through these processes, don't always think they're nefarious because my experience has shown both external influences, people have contracts, the healthcare industry is competitive related this business, and we need to figure out with fidelity to try to run those negotiations to ensure the outcomes are both ethical and in the best interest of the people we serve. So that's all I have.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to follow up what you said about the last fifteen years and fourteen years I've been here. If any commissioner would have said to me at any time that we should look into a new broker. I've never, I've never had a conversation with you about looking for a new broker or doing any type of letter like this over over the fourteen years I've been here. Again, I'm going to ask the solicitor. We we took formal action September two thousand nine to bring the broker. You're saying we can keep that broker after this temporary timeline is up?
Well, mu- much like this letter went out, you you could just mirror this letter and send it to the new broker. So yes, I believe that to be true at at this point.
Okay. Can I ask a legal question that you can get back to me later on? If I wanted to just look at all of our brokers in the county and begin sending letters on my letterhead, dropping them and adding somebody else because I just want to get the best deal for the county. That's allowable? I I guess I'd just like your legal opinion on that. I mean, I I guess that to me seems like that would just be a pretty odd practice.
Do you want to talk about it after the meeting?
I would prefer to get a legal, a legal opinion. I would prefer to get a legal, a legal opinion on that.
Sure.
I, I guess also I think the question that Commissioner Priest brought up is still relevant. Um, how was this broker chosen and what's the relationship to the broker?
Again, they brought the idea of pricing. They, they demonstrated to me that there was overpricing that occurred. And, um, there was a, uh, an opportunity to be able to say, if you can do that, show me what the pricing is. And that sort of, we, and then I talked about, what is the standard way to be able to ascertain pricing? Was the next question that we asked, and it was through a non-commitment letter that we discussed. And I asked to be approved by the solicitor's office with clear terms. All right, at, at this time, uh, if there's no more comments, I'd like to, um, uh, call for anybody in the audience that is willing to participate and provide public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Um, I heard a lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks about ethics. Um, and openness and transparency. And openness and transparency is something that we've talked about, that I've heard talked a lot about, uh, in prison board hearings. I also heard some, um, really concerning things this morning too, like, um, about Monday morning quarterbacking and citizens against everything. I've heard that too. And I want you to know that when you say those kinds of things, that has a really chilling effect on whether citizens want to come forward and bring things to you. And as a voter, I have voted for all of you in turn. And it is my job as a voter to hold all of you accountable. Not just the ones in my party or the, the guy that I like because he answers my emails. It's my job to hold all of you accountable. So when I'm sitting here, it's not that I'm against everything. It's that I'm sitting here listening critically and I do my research. I go back, I look at the articles, I pull up what is available to me publicly. So I'd be very careful about, um, calling certain groups of people citizens against everything. Because what we look at is patterns and practices. And again, that's language that I heard here today. What are the patterns and practices? I heard it when we were talking about, um, juvenile justice. I heard it when we were talking about, when I heard you talking about other things this morning. So let me say that I am a member of the prison, this prison's citizen advisory board. And so one of the things that we've heard in the last day is that there have been ten fentanyl overdoses at the prison. And that there is currently one person who, depending upon you, who you hear it from, is either dead or is in very critical condition. Now, we learned this, I learned this from other members of the citizens advisory board because people in the community talk to us. So once again, this is information which is not available in the public. And there could be parts of what I'm hearing that are rumor. But because of the wall that is there and because your appointed citizens advisory board is never used by the staff to, um, be notified when there is something major happening at the prison. We have only to go on the same things that people in the community hear. And even if our information is wrong, and I don't believe it is, but even if it is wrong or parts of it are wrong, we can only blame the county. We can only blame the prison because you always have the opportunity to come to us with this information and say, here's the truth. Here's how to respond when people talk to you, but that never happens. And here is one more time when that doesn't happen. Thank you. Oh, and one other thing, I would also, um, hope that you will publish where people can find it. The hearing on October twenty-fourth that looks at the solar contracts. Because there are some people who want to be at that. And I assume that it is in this room and I'll be looking for the time. Thank you.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware what he's referring to. Is, is that an, are, are you aware if that's an IDA hearing?
Um, I'm only going on the information that was in the newspaper article about the solar contracts. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll look into that. Yeah.
Um, my assumption is it's an IDA, it's in reference to an IDA hearing, but I, I will look into that.
I, I want to briefly just, uh, thank you, Ms. Parsons, for bringing that, uh, uh, concern about the prison. I just, as, as oversight of prison, I just want to apologize for you not being notified about that and there not being a, uh, pattern of communication, uh, that would alert you to that. Uh, that's certainly not my intention. And, uh, and I know we have to do better at utilizing our community advisory, uh, team, certainly in the sense of, uh, them being trusted, uh, community members who can, uh, i- in my estimation, uh, well, with like fact checking issues that happen when, when something critical like this happens. And so I appreciate your tenacity to bring that. And I just, I guess I want to clarify, we did have ten overdoses. Those were ten hospital transports. Um, and it was not fentanyl, uh, it was a benzo. Um, and, um, we do have one individual in critical condition. Their condition hasn't improved over the weekend. Um, uh, and, and that's the extent of what I'm able to say. An investigation is ongoing to, um, uh, how those particular drugs got onto the block in which they got on to. And that is, we, we can't comment on that, but, uh, but I can certainly talk to you afterwards if you, if you have other clarifying questions that, that, that might need addressed. So thank you for bringing that concern.
Morning Commissioners, Onosai, Swatara Township. Um, come here almost every week, uh, to hear what's going on in my county, part of my civic duty, and I'm available, and so I do it. Um, I care what happens in my community. So when I read articles on Penn Live, uh, that lay out the corruption of a former commissioner, um, whom two-thirds of this body sat with on this dais and served with for a long time. Um, I'm, I'm really disheartened by it because it makes me feel that either you're not paying attention or you were complicit in what was happening. Um, and it puts into question every decision made by this board, which is one of the reasons that I think we find ourselves here with the conversations that have happened in the last two weeks is because there isn't transparency that would give public faith to this board. And I, I wore this sweater today and voters aside, because I keep continually finding out that the two commissioners I voted for are left out of important decisions when it comes to this county. And that's not right. Like I, we vote for people to come here. There's three of you, not one for a reason. And we need that balance. We need there to be transparency. If I can't expect transparency for myself as a community member, if there's not transparency up there on this dais, if decisions are being made by someone who now has power that they did not have before, but has been here long enough to know how it should be executed and shouldn't be executed, um, to continue making these unforced errors is a problem for me. Someone pays taxes here and cares about what happens in my own community. Um, I've heard that there is a budget deficit and I keep hearing that. Yet when Commissioner Douglas brought to the attention that we could, you know, cancel the payments that we're making, we could to, uh, the former commissioner for his corruption, uh, sixty thousand dollars a year that he is making uh, off of, uh, an NRA contract that, to lobby the NRA that they didn't even need. Like, that should be canceled immediately. You're not actually interested in saving the taxpayers money that they shouldn't be spending, right? You have someone who we know was corrupt. Uh, we know that he was, for some reason, living in a mob, somehow corruption with this solar farm that lost the county money. Um, you know, money went to the coroner and his family. You know, somehow the former commissioner was involved in this solar farm. There are so many layers yet to be uncovered. Um, it's like waiting for the next shoe to drop of how much that commissioner milked out of our county. And to see that this board can't even vote to end his, uh, be him being on board, to end his current contracts where he's making money to absolutely do nothing, um, for this county. It doesn't seem like you're serious about this budget deficit when you refuse to do things like that. And I want to make another comment about the citizens against everything that you said. And I just wanted to be clear, um, for myself as a citizen, there are things that I am against and there are things that I am for. Um, for example, I am for transparency in government. I am against corruption in government. Um, I'm for the whole home repairs program. I am for good funding that going after every bit of funding that a county can get to help people get homes, repair their homes, stay in homes, have suitable housing and what they need for their families. I'm against fake jail debt. I'm against people who already paid, uh, the taxpayers have already paid and they've already paid their debt to society being saddled with debt in this county. Um, I'm for green energy. I'm against solar farms that cost the county money and enrich the former commissioner and the coroner. Uh, I am against the cronyism of, uh, what this seems to be current commissioners and former commissioners have that leads to a lot of this corruption. And I'm for finding diverse community members to fill roles on boards when someone who's already clearly engaged in corruption needs to be off the, the county's payroll. Um, I am against paying a racist firehouse to be a polling place for our elections. And I am for using a community school right up the street to be a polling place. So I just wanted you to know, we're not against everything. There's things we're for too. They're just sometimes not the things you're doing. And so that might be why you're hearing from us, which is our civic duty. Um, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.